Okay, I'll just be very brief. For the work session tonight, we're going to go over some high level items about the 2023 budget and a little bit about the 2022 budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Finance Director Aaron Vassalotti.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we are going to do a review of our 2022 expenditures and revenue projections, and then we're going to go into, can you guys hear me? Sorry. Sure, is that better? Yeah. There we go. Then we're going to go over 2023 council budget priorities and then council and staff identified priorities overlap a little bit there. Our objective is the same as it was in the previous year. We're looking to restore and maintain quality of service in the face of inflationary pressures, which have been extreme this year. Care for our employees in terms of compensation, become more competitive in hiring and retaining employees, and then plan for the future through greater investment in key capital assets, including roads, water, wastewater, infrastructure, and parks and cultural center. All right, so I'm just going to jump right in with our revenue update for the 3% sales tax. It hasn't changed much since the last month that we looked at it. Our original projection for 2022 was five and a half percent. And year to date, we're looking at about 3.1% over year to date last year. So our purple line here is our 2021, our gray line is 2022 actuals, and the green line is 2022 projected. So you can see we're trending down just a little bit from the projection every single month, except for March and April, where we were pretty flat with the 5%. So for the rest of the year, I'm projecting a 3% increase based on what we're seeing for the first six months. Any questions on this one? All right, lodging revenue, it's following in the same trend as we've seen for the rest of the year. We're still seeing tremendous increases. Our dark gray line is the 2022 actuals, and they are way up over 22 budget and 21 actuals. We're up 86% for the year to date. Our projection was only about 30%, so we are way over projection and way over last year. And this is just a summary of the information I just shared. 3.1% through July year to date for 3% sales tax and 85.2% year to date for lodging tax. All right, so now that we've looked at where we're at for the year, we can move into more of the projections. So for 2022 budget, we had originally estimated revenues would be 13.8 million, based on what we've seen in actuals so far and the projections for the end of the year. We're looking at about 13,614, so about 200,000 less than we originally projected. And then we look at expenditures, we had originally projected 13,614, and this is including all the amendments we've done for the 5% and for adding the grant position, some of the other ads that we've had. So our original amended budget was 200,000 over revenue over expenditures, but actual projected expenditures now are looking more like 12,996,000, so a lot less than what we had originally expected. Most of that is salary savings, just because we've had so many staff shortages. So we're looking at about 618,000 revenue over expenditures to end the year at this time. So it's a pretty big swing in both directions there. Any questions on that before? Okay, and then for 2023, with the 3% estimated increase in sales tax over our 2022 projected actuals, we're looking at 13,911,000, so about 100,000 more than we have projected for this year.
Aaron, does that include the projected increases in the lodging taxes?
It does not. Lodging taxes in a separate fund.
Okay.
So that's just general fund. I should clarify that. This slide just kind of breaks down some of our key revenues that we have for '22 and '23. So you can see the sales tax for the 2%, it is down about 220,000 this year versus what we had projected originally in the budget. And then we take that 3% into account for next year, we're looking at about 162,000 more than the 22 projections at this point. So we'll make up a little bit of the loss, but I don't think that we're going to get where we actually had originally projected for '22 even in '23 at this point. Property tax, '22 is not, '22 was a reassessment year, '23 is not. So we're expecting '23 to be pretty flat from what it was in '22. Much change there, and then roads is the 1%, it follows the same exact percentage as the 2% sales tax would. So we're going to see a decrease there for '22, and then we're going to see a little bit of making that up in '23. And then lodging taxes is way up, 484 versus our budget of 277. Any questions at this point?
I have one, if you don't mind. Any feel or have you had any discussion with the assessor's office about what that difference is in property taxes? Is it because of delinquency or any idea?
I have not spoken with them yet.
Just curious.
We will soon, but I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Are you referring to the '22 projection or the '23? '23, yeah.
I'm sorry, the '22 projected.
The '22 projected is just, it's about 97% collection rate.
Okay.
So that's the difference for '22, '23. We do need to get an answer though as to why it's a little bit lower than what it was in '22.
And then the '23 projection, does that factor in the new assessments and all the rumors that we were hearing?
So '20, '23 is not a reassessment year. So '23 for this year's budget that we're working on, it will not see much of a change. '24 is when we will, we will experience that reassessment rate.
Okay, so where should we see this big bump in property?
In '24.
In next year.
Yeah.
The assessment in 2024, collected in '25.
Because everything's in arrears.
Collected in '24, yeah. So we'll know when we get the certification next August, it will be including that reassessment, which will go into effect in '24. Yeah, it is a bit confusing because it's. All right, so now we'll look a little bit about inflation projections and what's been happening in the market. So our CPI index for July year over year is up 8.2%. And if you look at the graph here on the right, you can see what's happened with inflation and CPI, which this is for the Denver Lakewood area. You can see January of '21 is when we started just kind of lift off here and just go into this crazy inflation rate, where we've seen this year, last year, when we looked at it, I think we were about 5%. And so now we've seen an additional 8% over that at this point. So we're up 8.2% year to date. When you look at July '21 versus July '22, the good news however, is that for June and July of '22, we've only seen a 1.7% increase. So we are starting to see inflation curb tremendously, which is a good thing. We don't want to see deflation or stagflation, but we want to see it smooth to like that 1.5%, that's kind of the sweet spot for inflation. So hopefully that will continue. That's what most of the experts are projecting, is that we're still way up, but it's going to slow down over time here. Wholesale inflation is up 8.5%, and that's the true cost of goods before it actually gets to retail. So that's a really important number when it's up 8.5%. That's what businesses are having to pay to get their goods. And so that's quite a bit up. Social Security, at the beginning of the year, we were seeing maybe it was going to be 10, 11%. Right now, they're looking more at like 8.5, 8.7% for next year, still the biggest increase we've seen, I think, since '82. But it's a little bit lower than they projected, so it's about 8.7% for next year. And then tax brackets are expected to increase about 7.4% next year. So we have seen quite a bit of inflation. I think we know that we've been feeling it. All right, so based on that information, our budget assumptions for next year, we're looking at an estimate of a 3.0% increase in sales tax for next year. We're looking at a flat property tax in '23 and then reassessment in '24, and then a 2.5% inflation rate, based on what we're seeing in the market right now. Any questions on this? All right, so now we'll jump into the council priorities. So these are the council priorities that we've seen consensus on. We're looking at public safety, staff attraction and retention, housing and zoning, transportation utilities, economic development, and well-managed city budget and finances. I like that one the most, okay? All right, and then council budget requests. So we've seen, I believe, Michael, I don't know if you want to speak anything to this, but we've seen consensus, it seems like, for retaining staff, paying off Memorial Park debt, replacing aging vehicles, funding financially supporting the Veterans Rally, and possibly other events.
And I would say there's not consensus around these. These are just things we've heard from at least one council member, and most of these, I think, are just one council member each.
Okay, my apology.
Except for Memorial Park debt and retaining staff.
Okay.
What do you want to see first?
And then of course, STR regulation. Oh, let's add that in, I like that. All right, and then in addition, we have the major staff priorities, which are staff compensation, covering inflation expenses, streets, road repair, sidewalks, aging vehicle replacements, facilities preventative maintenance, fiber facilitation projects, reliever route, bolstering the water supply, keeping up with development, and parks and downtown beautification and maintenance.
And I would say those are staff identifying those things. We should probably say major staff identified priorities. It's not just for us as the staff, but seeing what we do every day in the field and hearing from residents, these are the things that we find most pertinent for the upcoming year.
Yes. So the reservoir included in the bolstering water supply?
Yeah. But yeah, that's part of it. He and I have had many conversations lately about water supply and reservoir and distribution, and there's a lot to it. On the previous slide, we talked, I think water was one to the previous one. I thought we made water one of its utilities, but I talked with you all about water rights acquisition or just water supply and water infrastructure as being one of those things that I think would be wise to focus on immediately and in the future, certainly a lot more focused. And Kip and I are having lots of fun conversations about what that looks like. I'm learning so much about the water supply, like Rob talked about with Kip. It's always an education.
Thanks, Aaron. Yes, so on the council priority slide, is there anything that we are missing? Is there anything that should be in here that's not? I know that we've gone through this pretty thoroughly, but we want to make sure we have the right priorities.
Maybe not necessarily as a main priority, but eventually I would like to see how we get our medians shaped back up again, like beautification and cleaning up the downtown area. So, because like just going going to little mountain towns on the weekends and stuff, and you see all the cosmos and the flowers and everything, it's like, why can't we ever seem to get that done? And I know it's budget, and I know it's having the staff to do it too. So the staff is hard.
I think there's a partnership opportunity there with the businesses as well, because they require daily water and they require daily maintenance. So if we have that partnership, then there's someone that can give that attention.
And I do, being that you say that, Mayor, I do remember there being a comment about improving the crosswalk where we have orange flags. Is that?
Yeah.
It does, and we were sitting on a fairly substantial fund balance that would be perfectly aligned with taking care of those things.
I mean, I'm happy to put wildflower seed down anytime in those medians, if you'll let me. I said I could put the wildflower seeds down anytime if they'll let me.
We planted flowers and all I got was comments from.
I know, because those aren't the right kind of flowers.
I just plant what they do.
I know. Anyway, sorry.
And then for the council budget request, have we captured everything on this slide as well?
Well, you've made some assumptions on there, and funding the Veterans Rally, we're already doing that in terms of in-kind. So is that what you're talking about?
We've had a request from a council member. Again, these are not consensus. Those are just individual, okay?
I asked about it so that this council could have a conversation and maybe rekindle the conversation that actually Mayor Carr started about identifying and really getting behind signature events that are very significant in bringing folks into town and into businesses. The Veterans Rally being one of them, Symphony Above the Clouds was discussed as another one, the Car Show was another one. There are more, but they're not coming into my mind right now, but I can find them. They're stored in here somewhere. And I just would like to have that conversation again. That's why I said that.
So again, these are from at least one council member, but again, not a consensus. We bring these up so that we can have conversation and bring context. You know, certainly we can talk about it tonight, we got plenty of time, but as we go through the more robust part of the budget process, and it helps us as we review different priorities coming from the staff side, how do we want to weigh those?
So that would be for me anyway, if you go back to the slide for staff. You have economic, no, you're there. The economic development. To me, that would be tied in with economic development, the whole looking at in terms of the business partnership and really kicking that off. So I would see those two being in the same category. And are the streets and roads included in transportation and utilities?
Yes.
We saw some pretty bad roads in this town.
But they're getting better.
They are getting better. Have you been on Rampart Range, Kelly Road?
Those are looking really good.
They were in the.
You walked them.
I do.
Massively improved.
Like I say, I had something really, really important. Obviously, that's why it slipped right out of my head. I'll think of it. Economic development, I just want to share that there is a program, we talked about it in the PPA CG board meeting yesterday, and it was actually hosted at the sheriff's office by Teller County this time. And there's a proposal about, and I did not bring those notes, I brought some others. There's an economic development, like overarching group that's being talked about for the region. And it comes with some funding opportunities. Michael, if I will get that information out of my notes and share that with you so that we can maybe look and see if that's, you may know what I'm talking about.
It's still very new. I remember having that conversation with A and B Gunning and some of the other area managers. But yeah, it's still very new. I didn't have a lot of details. Maybe you have more now, but.
Well, yeah, and I can tell you that it wasn't completely warmly received, because I think they want to be able to, because it all boils down to it's funding for bigger things, but each entity still has to provide for the management and all of those in carrying out the activities. So it wasn't really a hot topic for anyone, but I just wanted to mention it for your benefit.
I came away thinking it was something akin to an economic development council for the region.
Yes, exactly.
There's many thoughts to have about that.
Yes, yes, and those were discussed, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I guess my biggest question is, do we have consensus on any of these items that we want to program into the budget? Because we're looking to get an idea of what major priorities we have that we would like to program in.
I am good with all of those.
I am leery to pay off the Memorial Park debt. I have no issue with paying down. I don't like the idea of putting all our eggs in one basket. It takes us back down to that very bare minimum fund balance that was established by the last council. And I think we have to look at what we can manage responsibly and still have the security that this community's come to know and enjoy.
Well, I think that if you look at the numbers, we're actually at a 27% fund balance paying off the Memorial Park. Takes us down to about 17, which was already healthy. Paying off the Memorial Park is a basket I'd like to see go.
Yeah, I think that's one of my highest priorities, because I mean, if you're trying to stay out of debt, the best thing to do is pay off a debt if the interest on the debt is far greater than the interest you're collecting from the money sitting in a bank account. And Michael, you told me today you did a study, you looked at it, and the interest on the debt is far greater than the interest we are getting from it sitting in the bank. So from a financial perspective, it makes sense to pay off the debt so that that frees up the money next year that you now are not paying towards principal and interest for other good ideas. Because there's a lot of good ideas I'd like to support, but to get to those other good ideas, I'd like to stay true to what we kind of agreed to during the budget cycle last year, that our goal was to pay off the Memorial Park debt. And Robert, you were the one that showed us how we could make it possible when we were thinking about just paying down the debt of both of the loans in Memorial Park and the Aquatic Center. If we put all the money towards one, we could actually get out from under that debt and then free up some cash for later funding. So Kelly, I hear what you're saying, but when the interest rates are so out of whack, then financially it makes sense to pay off the debt if you can.
I hear you. I just would like to look at it in different scenarios, what that looks like and the effect on our forecasting in the future and the needs and the streets. And of course, this is an out streets fund, but I just like to look at the options.
I'm not against looking at options, Kelly, with you.
Debt is not bad for, not all debt is bad.
Can I ask about that? When we sell the property at the stagecoach?
The DDA.
And we get the 550 paid back to the city. Can that money be used to go towards the park and increase our? It'd be 18% at that point, I think, instead of 17 after the park's paid off.
It's available to use as the council sees fit.
I don't, yeah, I don't know of any restrictions.
At some point in time to be.
That money came from unreserved fund balance when that $2 million was loaned to the DDA.
And that is something we probably should have included in this presentation. My apologies for that, is that is bogey on the radar, as it were. You know, that is one-time money, obviously. You get one-time money, you want to think about one-time uses. One of the, I've talked with a few of you about this, one of the themes, as we mentioned, I had up there preventative maintenance. Karen, in her wisdom, reminded me that's actually deferred maintenance, which indeed is deferred maintenance is something that we do want to focus on, especially as we are putting the final touches on a five-year capital improvement program, which we are doing. And so that will help better illustrate kind of all the needs we have out there in terms of deferred maintenance, because we haven't, without a forward-looking budget all these years, we haven't really given a lot of thought to that. We haven't been strategic about it. It's kind of just been this pays-you-go, slap Band-Aids on stuff, and as we all know, it's pay me now, pay me later. And we do have a few ticking time bombs out there, and so things like that, I would encourage you to consider one-time money for one-time uses. But we can, we'll get into that more if that's something the council would like to do with that money, or you just want to hold it for something else. Your call.
So Aaron, can you go back one slide, please? So I don't generally have a problem with, but this list either. The only thing is, you know, the financially support the Veterans Rally, I would prefer to see that more if you're going to do that, like Kelly said, signature events, not just the rally. I would agree with that, Kelly. Thanks. Because I'll tell you, Michael pointed it out when we had this conversation, that if we do one, there's going to be others. Would want to do that as well. So that's where that thought of having a conversation again about signature events and what that might look like and what this council thinks about it. And as far as paying off the debt, I can go either way. I mean, if it was my personal account, I wouldn't pay it off because I'm worried about the recession, and I'd much rather have that sitting in the bank just in case. But again, if you play out the numbers and it makes more sense to pay it off because of the interest rate, I can, like I said, I can go either way. And then I personally like the replacing the aging vehicles. But that's just. That's just me.
Well, I want mine replaced.
And you get a car, and you get a car.
Do you get a car?
Well, no. So when I saw the Green Mountain Falls police vehicles up here in our back parking lot, a couple of months last month, they looked like crap. They were embarrassing. So I would like to replace our aging vehicles if we can, and it makes sense.
Well, I would just like to make a comment on that. I drive a 1993 pickup, and I drive a 2006 Pacifica. I don't think that our city is determined by the looks of our vehicles as much as their functionality. And I think I was talking to Kip, and he said it's like, what was like $50,000 to replace some of those Chevy, the little S10 vehicles, is now like 100 grand. So is this the best time to do that, or are we better off to be putting our dollars into?
I'm just saying we can look at it.
Okay.
I just have to make a comment, Robert.
A handful.
These are not personal vehicles. They don't compare to your vehicles at all. The use on these are 100 times what you use a vehicle for. So it doesn't have anything to do.
The statistics of repairing vehicles and keeping them in good condition versus new is not always, you know, buy new isn't always the best answer, so. Yeah, okay.
And that'll be, that's all part of the more in-depth budget. We will have some statistics on that too.
Yeah, as Michael touched on before with the capital improvement plan, we haven't proactively looked at when we should be replacing some of these major assets and at what point. So it's part of this discussion when we build out the capital improvement plan of how aggressive should we be? What does that look like? So any feedback on that, we appreciate it, and we will build it in.
Thank you.
I think we're kind of going around. Good. So there's three of them. I'll just make comment. I've already talked to the Memorial Park debt, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse. To replace the aging vehicles, I think there's a trade-off analysis that should be done. When your maintenance costs exceed the cost of a new vehicle, then it makes sense to purchase the new vehicle. But if you can maintain a vehicle for a less cost than buying one, maintain. Michael, we spoke about maintenance. I'm high on maintaining things, so I trust that you will do that analysis. I'm not against replacing them, but I would always go towards maintaining them if it's cheaper.
Right, and we, I don't know how big our fleet is. I don't, Ben, do you know offhand? I don't, I should know, and I apologize that I don't. You know, we do, we keep some records. I don't know how definitely go on maintenance costs. I think we do have that. The stuff we're placing has been pretty rough, and it's like Councilmember Case, Mayor Proton Case said, it's not just mileage. In a previous life, I was a budget analyst for the fleet, the fleet for my city, and managed a $9 million fund with 2,500 vehicles in the fleet. And we looked at three metrics when we looked at when to replace a vehicle. And we looked at three metrics when we looked at when to replace a vehicle. One of them is maintenance dollars. One of them's also mileage or hours. And I think turn remember what the other one was. But there is a number of different things that go into it. Another thing is fuel economy. Newer vehicles are a lot more fuel efficient, which is a particularly relevant thing to think about right now, as we all know. Newer vehicles also come with warranties that save us from a lot of maintenance costs as well. So there, as you say, there is a kind of a calculus that goes into it.
There's a calculation to determine which ones.
Yeah, I think effective.
Let's not forget.
Right. Yeah. So we're kind of getting really into the weeds here and I think that if that's stuff that everybody wants and they're requesting this request, if anyone wants to add something, I would say maybe we should add that. But this is probably for discussion later to get into the weeds, right? Just asking.
Ken, I'm trying to be in the weeds. I'm just trying to give you, you know, my thoughts on on this request in terms of the only other one I talked to and then David, I'll turn it over. You know, you can.
I heard.
The the, I have questions because there's three veterans sitting on the dais. Everybody else is not a veteran. The support for the veterans rally. It's an observation of mine that I wanted to throw up against the other veterans, David and Frank. I don't see it as really a a very embracing, comprehensive veterans rally. Now, I have twenty six years. I'm not just a veteran. I'm a retiree of twenty six, so I've seen a little longer span of the military service. I went to the veterans rally to all of the booths. And I felt like it was a very small segment of all veterans. It was Vietnam motorcycle rider and veterans. I did not feel like I was even a part of that rally based on how it was.
Yes. So Rusty, I got twenty seven years in service. I should be by here. But I'll tell you, that that veterans rally, that is that group that you're talking about. That is the group that is doing that is doing that's not.
I get it.
And if other veterans want to attend and be a part of it, they can. But that's, that's really that that.
I get it. If I'm just.
I think we're getting way into the weeds. Like if we don't have anything else to do, we should probably, because we're going to talk about things later on.
Okay. If I could finish without interruption. I I think the idea of a having a signature event would be a better concept than specifically for the veterans rally. Because it just was not what I thought it should be. So that's where I would give you my feedback.
Yeah, we appreciate that, but because of the the dynamic that you all mentioned earlier about equity among events, we my recommendation, I think our staff's recommendation would be something you can to there being a pot of money, a revolving, let's call it a grant, a revolving grant fund, if you will, that folks can apply for. Maybe you have a criteria that this event fits the signature event mold. It takes off boxes A, B, and C. And if that meets that criteria, then they're subject to receive a grant. If they don't, sorry. So I would recommend something where everybody would have a chance at the apple, abide at the apple as opposed to just picking one or the other in the name of equity.
I'll take a step back when we were talking about these and Val Carr was kind of driving the budget bus. The whole idea was in the big pushback at that time was Main Street. Main Street had been given funds and then there was a a constant reduction of funds because they're looking to see Main Street with their own input into this and it seemed like they were resistant to doing that. And there was also a fund, like a pool of funds at the time. And at that time, we concluded we didn't, it wasn't our function as council to have a a fund for all these different people to come to to ask for those funds. That's not our responsibility. It is our responsibility to encourage business and I think economic development really is where that's where that wheelhouse needs to be. And it's not in us having a group, having a pool of money and then people coming before councils, say, we're going to have this event, we're going to have that event. Can we please have money? That's really not our function. And I don't think we should be putting that sort of allocation in the budget at all. The second, are you finished, Frank? Sorry, Rusty, did you get all your points?
Yeah, I just wondered which ones I sort of supported and which ones I'm kind of was pushing back against.
I just want to put a marker in your top one retain staff and then go back to the or go to the next slide. Where it says staff compensation and cost of living increases. We found ourselves blindsided on the last five percent approval that we had talked about there being metrics in the compensation and pay and that wasn't addressed. And we had, we approved that, but we also proved with the caveat that next time it comes around, we want to see it tied to performance. So I just want to put a marker in here that allocating money for it without putting those markers in place would be a problem for me.
And we and we hear that and that's something we're we're working on. And we we did provide metrics on turnover citywide and by pay range as requested. We we're looking at a couple of different models for some kind of performance based pay to match or not to match, but to be considered along with a cost of living. We have not finalized that balance yet because we're finalizing our projections. We're looking at the other needs. It's all it's all part of the same considerations, all the same pool of money. And so we we don't know that yet until we know how many dollars are available. But we hear, we hear that. We've talked about that quite a bit, actually.
Okay.
Share from the Tri County Study of Transportation and Different Items Associated for PPSCG was adopted yesterday. And in understand, it's just a study, it's not a list of projects. But just so that the the folks know that one of the items that is listed that's near and dear and on our list up there is the study. Well, the reliever route on twenty four. But the study planned for Woodland Park, Taylor County and C dot is scheduled for next year. And I did appeal when we did our reports by municipality and by the commissioners. I did mention to them, Michael gave me some good information to share with that group. That we were looking for partners for that study from a funding perspective. So I did share that again, and we did have a pretty good conversation in that meeting about that. So I thought it was well received. So we'll see how that comes out. Just that's all I wanted to just share that.
Is that both public and private partners?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
That would be preferred if at all possible. The more, the more the mayor and C dot sizes is what I've.
Absolutely.
All right. So our next steps on the budget process as we move forward, we of course will have the budget delivered to you all by October fifteenth. We're aiming for October fourteenth at this time. We anticipate the budget presentation to be October twentieth. Budget work session to discuss the budget on November third. And then the initial postings on November seventeenth and the public hearing on December first. So any other questions? I would like to point out when we talk about staff salaries, though. When we look at expenditures here, mostly all of our savings is because we're short staffed. And it is something that we do need to address. And I understand we need to give metrics in the way that that's responsible to do, but we we do need to take action because it's it's concerning.
Savings isn't a good word.
No, it's not. It's not a good word, but it's, yeah, it's how it shows up here in our expenditure.
Erin, we had a percentage on that. How long ago was that, Michael? Was like sixty eight percent? We were staffed up to sixty eight percent. What's our staffing percentage?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't have that. I know back in January, I think we said it was seventy or seventy five percent fully staffed. I don't feel like it's all that different right now.
It might be a little lower, but it's not.
Well, I think it's a little.
Not higher.
But it's interesting because it's changed. We're having a little bit. Just this is anecdotal now, I apologize, but a little bit better success with field crews. I think police and a big chunk of that is because of that dude back there. So but for police, but those, those folks are doing a little bit better. We have some stability. It's the professional ranks. The folks primarily in this building that we're having a little bit more difficulty with. Now it's interesting.
Can you go back one slide? Thanks.
We had all the dates.
Michael, also, I shared with the board that about the economic development. As I said, plus that we were looking for a budget manager and there were several ideas that were given to me by the chair. And a couple of other folks that I'll share with you as well. Yeah.
Erin, I want to go back to the topic we were on before we jump slide. Can we go to the one that shows the six hundred fifteen thousand on the staffing or six eighteen? A lot of that savings that you're saying is because we are understaffed.
Correct.
If the salary stayed exactly as they are. And we would have had a hundred percent of the staffing at the appropriate salary levels.
Yes.
What would that go down to? That's six eighteen. What do we be end up? Because if we're going to start doing percentage increases on top of the across the board type of thoughts like we did. I want to see what that number.
When we
Does it go red?
When we build the budget out, we budget at a hundred percent. So we would have been at two hundred thousand revenue over expenditure still. If that makes sense.
In other words, you've only would have paid four hundred thousand out of that for the employees that you're missing.
There, there are some other items that make it up, but it's the majority is salaries. It's not a hundred percent. I don't have the percentage to break it out to tell you it's ninety percent or seventy, you know, it's.
Okay. When we get in, like David said, we're at the high.
I mean, we're going to discuss.
We'll get nauseam later.
All right. So thank you.
What do you want to talk about? Thank you.
I thought that was going to take longer. You can have the next forty four minutes to yourself.
Erin, can you go back to one slide? Just kidding. Oh, I know what it was. Yes, thank you. I thought maybe I missed.
Well, it seems like some of you wanted a high view and didn't want to talk about details. But Erin, you're asking us for generalities if we have consensus on these. It seems to me that we don't, we talk about it. I thought we're going to come back for a work session and deal with all that. Better we do it now so that he has a pretty clear idea of where we're going with it. You know, these are just general sound like you just kind of put some things up there and some of them aren't even consensus upstairs. So why don't we spend that time to talk about them a little more detail? Do you have a problem with that?
That'd be helpful for Erin.
I'm trying to understand what we accomplished. At this point in time, what have we accomplished?
Or is there something Erin would like? Is there something further we could help you with?
That's a better.
If we know we have consensus on items, it'll make it easier for us to build the budget out with those items in mind.
So I think retained staff is one thing. Someone spoke about potential metrics, though. I think I think there's a consensus on that is that everyone okay with that? So paying off the Memorial Park debt, some of us are all for it, some of us are against it, some of us are on the fence.
I'd just like to see the option of paying it down versus.
Let's see what that looks like.
Absolutely. So would we like to see the fund balance differences if we do or we don't? Okay. And then I'll provide that to you shortly.
And then replacing aging vehicles, some people say no, some people say yes. So let's take a look at what needs to be replaced and what the costs for that are. Rusty mentioned, if you could potentially show a difference between repair values versus replacing. If you have those bad information on particular vehicles, that would be useful.
Okay.
So.
As part of the CIP plan they're working on, we'll have a listing of all the vehicles by age. So I think that might give a picture of how old some of the vehicles are and how many miles they have. So I think that's going to lead to that.
And it's more like Hillary, it's more than just maintenance. It's total cost of vehicle because there is a component of of gas savings.
Sure. Well, I'm sure that Kip can give you a finite rundown of what he needs done. And I'm sure the chief can say what he needs done for particular vehicles. So I'm sure that each department that needs vehicles replaced is happy to say when, where, why, how. So.
Right. And we don't, and we don't want to replace them all at once because then we have the same problem we have, which is when we replace them all in two thousand.
They need to be rotated.
So. To ask the council to remember. Just put yourself in the shoes of the workers in the field and the police officers and the public works guys. And they're out there and their office often is that vehicle they're in. And it's, it's a, it's, we're trying to look at ways that maybe don't always involve salary or that kind of thing to reward and recognize and take care of our people. What's the word I'm looking for? Michael incentivize, you know, make them feel happy, make them feel like they're valued, those kinds of things. And if you're out there driving in in a piece of you know what vehicle, that's hard to do. And so that's a component of that full compensation package. And I'm not saying that we need to replace all the vehicles or anything else like that, but keep those things in mind. It's a, it's a human thing as well. It's not just maintenance for a vehicle. So we're looking at at staff issues and retaining staff. That's a component that could be very effective for those that are in rolling stock. That's all. I just wanted to put that in bug in your, thank you.
Mike, Michael, I don't know if I was talking to you about this or somebody at CML. You did fleet budget anyway. One of the other, and I don't know if it was George's jurisdiction or someone else, they said that they have created a way, they've got a department rep that simply deals with vehicles. So it doesn't come, apparently this is very common on council to have issues of, you know, we have to pay for replacement vehicles, et cetera. They have a whole spreadsheet maintenance, all this, and it's done by a particular depart, I don't know if it's done by a department, whatever, but it doesn't come out of the budget. It's separate, it's done separately. And so it allows all of this type of vehicle maintenance replacement or whatever to be done in a very pragmatic way. Is that, was that your city that does that or is that?
We, we actually looked at that and we never pulled the trigger on that because there's a lot of complexity in it. And it's essentially establishing an internal service fund as sinking fund is the technical term, I think, where you would, you would, each department would pay a fee based on the number of vehicles they have into the fund and you keep it in its own separate pocket here. And then you replace, you have a certain number of vehicles that need to be replaced every year. You you work down that list. It's somewhat scientific and objective. Aurora did do that in my previous city. It was really difficult to get it done there to, from budgeting, a budgeting standpoint, we haven't talked about that here. We don't have a ton of different departments. We had twenty different departments and twenty one different funds in my previous city. So it's basically the the funds with the vehicles are the general fund and the water and wastewater funds. Maybe there's one or two in cultural and recreation. I don't know, but there would be less less of a point of that. But what, what we would probably do and Aaron spoke about it is you have a capital improvement fund or a capital projects fund, kind of the same thing, sort of. But you would, you would budget for it, you budget for vehicles as capital assets. In that that capital improvement program or their capital project fund. And that is how you keep track of it and you would fund it and you would deduct X amount of dollars every year from the general fund, water, wastewater. You could do it like that. You're, you're just, you're just kind of handling the money differently. You still need the money, but you, I think maybe to your point, if I'm hearing you correct. But you, I think, maybe to your point, if I'm hearing you correctly, is you have a kind of a scientific predictable methodological way of replacing vehicles that's not a surprise or seen as arbitrary is that.
Yeah, it was more like, if I remember correctly, each department would chip in, let's say they had five vehicles. They would chip in a certain kind of like a lease amount of money.
Right.
So their budget would be, we have five vehicles. There's a there's a dollar factor determined for each vehicle of what that is for maintenance and all of servicing and all that sort of thing. So each department then has one is five, one is twenty five, one is ten, whatever it is. And then so all it is from our standpoint is, okay, there's this many vehicles, the allocation, the annual allocation is this much. And then someone oversees that whole model and it's 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 just perfunctory.
Yeah, it's it's a more deliberate. It's more of an accounting practice, at least in the way our the size of our our city, maybe Aaron can speak more to it. His previous organization had a lot of vehicles that were placed more regularly. But I don't know if you have any other thoughts on it, Aaron.
No, we had the CIP plan that we used for vehicle replacements. We didn't use a sinking fund there either.
Yeah, okay.
Well, what I've seen when I was auditing other organizations is an internal service fund like Michael spoke to that's funded by all the other operating funds to take care of this, the the assets, the capital assets, mostly rolling stock and equipment. But it's what I own. I saw it in larger organizations that have a lot of and it's more of keeping track of things way than it is for, I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere. And it comes from the revenues of the organization. But we we used, and I've spoken to both of you about when we had a good, healthy fund balance, we used a portion of that as a rolling fund to fund capital purchases. And then we would we would pay that back over the life of the asset or the depreciation life of the asset. So that that fund was remained whole and it revolved. And so we but we've not that was because they used to always finance purchases. I mean, they'd finance a twenty thousand dollar car and for ten years, which just was ridiculous. And so we used that to get away from using the bank. We were our own bank, if you will, using our idle funds to purchase and keep when we had a schedule that rolled. Everybody knew what was due in this year's budget. Similar to what you're preparing now.
And in my previous jurisdiction, we also use lease purchase arrangements for major equipment, not for something that's twenty thousand dollars. But generally, a hundred thousand dollars are up. We would put on the lease payment schedule. And then you would you would throw in certain amount of general fund dollars for a regular fleet replacement program. And it all it all kind of came out in the wash. It was all the fleet management fund for the lease purchases. And then general fund matched it. So it's it's just kind of accounting. It doesn't magically make more money pop out, but something else we've talked about, I don't have real high hopes for, except on analysis before is leasing vehicles. Generally, companies that do that sort of thing, like sedans and nice, happy little cars, which a lot of municipalities don't have. And the cars we have are police pursuit ready units and we just beat the snot out of those things. I don't want to do that. But we are going to look at it with fresh eyes, I think. But we, you know, we try, we try and be creative about it. I mentioned a few minutes ago that there was three metrics my previous jurisdiction looked at when replacing vehicle. Come remember the third, it's maintenance dollars, it's miles, and it's the age of the vehicle. And so we we would count count to fifteen points, as it were. And so maintenance was maintenance dollars was weighted a little bit more, is weighted twice as much as as age and mileage. But you could have at fifteen points, we say this thing needs to be replaced. We'd count up to twenty points. That would really make clear. Oh, my gosh, this thing needs to go. If it got to twenty points out of fifteen. But something consider some maintenance, you get ten points mileage or hours, you get five points and then age of the vehicle, you can get five points. And then that's it's kind of a more objective way to look at it. We had a fleet management software that calculated all that and kept all the maintenance dollars in there. So there is a way to do it. We don't have that system here. That would be nice. It's also pricey.
Yeah. And in my previous organization, we also had a hard cap on mileage. So we had a similar waiting system, but I think it was a hundred and eighty thousand miles it had to go. It could no longer be used as a police vehicle because it was unsafe. And not really, yes.
Just a comment if I could. May there, there is a request that is not on the list, and I'm not asking for it to be on the list. I just want to throw it out there for future. And Kelly, you and I talked a little bit about it. I've always hoped for a mill, a temporary mill levy reduction. And the reason why is the commissioners, when they spoke to the council members that attended the joint session, they were telling us the council should be proactively taking a look at possibility of mill levy reductions to help the citizens who are not aware of what is about to hit them on their property taxes. Because everybody's property taxes are about to go sky, sky high. So that was going to be one of my pet rocks that I wanted to talk about. But if I understand your presentation, because I just got it, and I'm trying to listen and digest everything. The assessment year we're in for the two year assessment period. The first group of houses that are assessed this year, they're not going to feel it till next year. So we really
All of them, all the properties.
Oh, all will
All will be reassessed in next year.
Next year. Okay, so since there's not going to be a felt out of pocket to the citizens this upcoming twenty twenty three. I'm not trying to put a temporary mill levy reduction on the table. Honor some of the things we talked about, but I do think the council should think about it in the future. What the commissioners had suggested to help the citizens, because when that jump goes up, because they properties have been artificially held down, when it jumps up and it's felt in two years, we should, as a council, think about doing something. But I'm not asking to put it this year because it's
debts and things like that if we have our paid off.
Could you speak into the mic? I can't hear.
Right. I'd be in support of that if we had the part paid off and we had our debt paid down. And the pool was paid down before we start looking at reducing things. So and I've said that from the beginning and then on my website whenever I had for council.
Yeah.
I'm in support of reducing the mill levy. But we got to focus on the priorities and take care of our debt first.
Your revenue while you're trying to pay down.
Right, that's
For me, anyway, I wouldn't even be discussing that right now.
I mean, the the one thing with a temporary mill levy is it's it's for one year. It's not. It's not a reduced forever. It's just a one year. It goes back to what it was the following year. So that's a little different than just what they did last year, two years ago, when they they You're just kicking the can down. But you are just kicking I'm not disagreeing. I'm just
However, we decide to pay off the part now or through time, I just
Because remember, that's the time that that reassessment happens, it'll be two years old. Right. Information. And it was just April that the market changed. Right. So this is just the first hit of another hit coming later because it we're lagging two years and it just happened in April where the market changed. And it's still changing.
And it's all retired population is going to take these hits.
Yeah, but it's
That's why I've suggested that at sixty eight, that rate goes away for our homeowners. No, it's not. The city can remove the mill rate for
We we will have, I've Aaron and I have both talked with the county assessor's office at some length about this. And it's a conversation that I think many of the taxing entities in the county are going to huddle up and figure out how best perhaps to address it. I think the term they use was a temporary tax override and mill of the override is the terminology. But yeah, it would be, you might do that to kind of ratchet it up artificially and help people step into it. But again, that's that's a policy conversation, not one for twenty twenty three again. But we will have more information for you. It's been a lot of really high level speculation. To be honest, I'm kind of surprised that there's been this much dialogue so far. But it is that said, it is this is an important thing that we want to tackle.
I think the way the commissioners presented it, it left a seed of thought in my mind that it was going to happen sooner than it really is going to happen. And as I'm listening to the delayed effect and stuff, it's like I'm premature by a year.
Well, now now is the time to talk about it. So it's it's good, even though it is premature because these things take time.
See, I I think that the most effective way that we can do what you're speaking of and to really affect and help is a collaborative approach like you just described, Michael. And and I would love to have that conversation with all of the taxing authorities that our Teller County enjoys, if you will, not that it's really enjoyed.
Yeah, because there's, you know, the average resident in William Park pays eighty mils right now. We are about sixteen of that. So we're just one small piece. The school district being the largest, the county, the fire department being about the same size as us roughly. So we're just a piece of the puzzle.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to ask, Aaron, was there any other areas that we want clarification from us from what's on there, from what you heard tonight?
I don't believe so.
I think so. It's been a good conversation.
I will. I will get you the fund balance analysis for the memorial park debt payoff.
I heard the idea that we wanted to do free puppies for everybody. Probably screwing puppies.
That was Michael's all cars. Pool pass. Now, that was a is this a place to talk about that? No, well, I just want to put it in your whole budget thing here. Frank had a great, I thought it was a great idea to seed from the city to the community with their water bill every couple of months, three months or whatever, a couple of pool passes. We might take a hit from a couple of pool passes, but it's going to get more people getting the experience of the pool and could help us increase user ship down the road. Put a limit on it if you like, if you get, if you put in a couple of passes with the water bill, it had to be used within, say, three months or something. It might just be a way of getting of sowing seeds into our pool to get more use out of it. And I like that idea, Frank. So I don't know what it would cost us, but
We would know until it happened. I don't know if we would know until it happened, but
We could monitor or try it and try it for two seasons or something and see.
We can talk about that.
You what?
Okay, yeah. I'd say if you wanted to do that, put that on their water bill so they can bring their water bill in, pay more money for envelopes and passes.
Oh, but oh, that's a great breathe their water. Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah. Doesn't cost us anymore. I like what you're saying. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so Aaron, do you need anything else from us?
I don't believe so, Michael. I think so, good.
It's been very helpful.
Are you guys all clear, like with the short term housing regulation thing about what the cost would be to start regulating and the potential person to manage it?
I think that's a whole other conversation. Yeah, that's true.
I, yeah, I don't want to have the whole conversation of it, but you want him to include it. The speculation included in the budget request.
Great idea. Yeah. We will figure out a way to get whatever it is in there. If necessary, we could do it. We can do a we could do a supplemental at the beginning of the year if it takes that long.
But because there's a revenue piece to it as well.
There better be.
Not just
Well, somebody has to enforce the codes. And the two thousand dollar punishments, somebody's got to collect those.
I'll volunteer.
We'll just send He's retired. Shall I take it back? You might. You might, actually.
No, thank you.
Council, is everybody okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Hey, this work session's over.